All right, I will open up the January 19th meeting of the Hamilton Planning Board. It's minute after seven o'clock on our agenda tonight. We have review and discussion of our potential zoning bylaw language change to potential bylaw language with our flexible residential development bylaw. We may be talking about a potential zoning map change downtown and other board business in minutes. So Patrick, and correct me if I'm wrong, you sent out everything to the developers today. Based on the changes that Marnie made to the text and to Bill's matrix the other day. And I'm not sure how many you sent them out to, but or will send them out to, but you know, that that's in process.
Yeah, I've sent out for today, I've sent those to Larry Smith, David Trager, Peter Gordo, and Ben Carlson. If folks have other names of individuals or companies you'd like to send the text to, let me know, I'm happy to do that. I also took the liberty of connecting with the FinCom today. Chairman John Prulidge and Dave Wanger, they're going to be happy to assist us. They would like a member or two and myself to sit down and review it with them at some future date.
Great.
So I think that'll be useful to have their perspective. I know they appreciate being able to to consume this sort of legislation ahead of time. So they can get to know it and understand it, ask questions. As you know, typically as part of town meeting, they give an opinion on such matters ahead of votes. So I think this is an important step to take. I also think it's important to get their sort of understanding and input relative to how this could potentially affect taxation.
Yeah. And sorry, did you say CP Barry was were they on your list?
You know what, I forgot them, but I'll do, I'll send to them tomorrow.
Okay, now I'll I'll get you the email for somebody at Beverly Crossing too. I don't know if they'll, they will or they won't, but can certainly reach out. Was there anybody else that we were talking about? Rick, do you remember?
Uh, no, that that covered pretty much covers it. I mean, I don't know if we want to send it to our local guy. I'm drawing a blank now. Tom Ford.
I know that we had involved him in review of these things quite often. Here's what I'll suggest that I send it to him. I know that this is typically not the type of product that he builds. Oh, yeah. If he wants to review, great. If he doesn't, you know, I'll leave that at his election.
Yeah.
I think since he came before us as a matter of courtesy, we should.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, if he doesn't want to, he doesn't want to, that's fine.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Great. Um, so anything else on that from anyone? Okay, moving on to the potential downtown business district zoning map change. Patrick is going to bring us up to date. I don't think we've really done much since we talked last.
Yeah, we had, I don't think we've done anything since our last discussion. We did discuss the general parameters of what we were doing, which was basically taking the business district, moving it the northerly edge upwards to include the Carriage Lane property, to include the property where the Public Safety Building is located, where the Council on Aging Building is located, also where the Winthrop School and its campus is located, is the general area that we're, we were talking about. I was wrong in my statement a while ago, I did discuss with the town DPW Director, if there were any utility kinds of issues in that part of town. He did tell me that from time to time, we do have drainage issues, largely coming from Weaver Pond getting too much runoff. And then that sort of flushes over onto the Winthrop School property on its way toward Miles River. So, you know, that would definitely transition into some infrastructure to deal with that at some future time. I've always, you know, had a sort of a mindset that if the Winthrop School property should be developed, understanding that that development's access to and from Bay Road is going to have to coordinate and be located in context likely immediately across the street from the Asbury Street intersection with Bay Road. That being the case, it's likely going to require MassDOT involvement. And I fully anticipate that they would be expecting probably a turn in lane at that location. If there's very much development to take place on the Winthrop site. Definitely a signal would be required at that location, I would have to believe. I don't bring these up as impediments, I just bring them up as issues that would need to be dealt with at a future time. If that property is developed in a different way than it now is. I also did want to mention that I did have the Conservation Commission Coordinator answer the question between the Council on Aging site coupled with the Winthrop School and the Public Safety Building property. He told me he didn't have any knowledge or documentation of any wetlands on any of those properties. And he did reference the Oliver site that's put together by MassDP. They have a general location map for all wetlands in the state, so he did consort that.
Great. Yeah, after our last meeting, a friend of mine who lives back behind Winthrop was, he was on the call last two, well, two weeks ago, and you know, he had a similar opinion to Rick about, you know, if we are to suggest this and proceed with this, you know, down the road that, you know, we or some other body should have, you know, some kind of, you know, significant proposal or renderings or what have you of what could go there to help alleviate people's.
You know. You know, that's very interesting because I had, I had a conversation with somebody who I respect and understands local politics, and he said essentially the same thing. He said, if you were proposing this and there was a development that was, you know, whether it was commercial or mixed use or residential, people could see it, they would understand what it was, how much tax revenue, I mean, you know, then there would be numbers and visions with it. And it would, it's like the devil you know, as opposed to the devil you don't know. Whereas if you're just making this change and the business district has a wide range of uses, then it it creates fear in people. Well, what are they going to do there? What are they, you know, what's going to happen? So his, his view was, you know, it might be better waiting till you actually had some interest or some sketch plan or some ideas to show for it. People would see what what was actually going to happen.
Well, I have to agree with Bill. Alternatively, instead of having one schematic for one type of development, I think it might be helpful to develop several alternatives so that people could see the realm of possibility. And then I think it's also important, and Patrick, you distributed the design guidelines, that any development would adhere to those design guidelines. Because Bill's right, I mean, when you, when you think about it just in a vacuum, it could be a disaster. I mean, the residential, the resident, the people living in the residential areas surrounding the school likely would get up in arms unless they can actually envision something. They can say that's fine, or if you make these changes, we can live with this, or we, we don't, we don't like it, or we like this, we don't like that. But I think that people really do need some concepts of what could go there. Unless we want to have controversy right out of the box.
I absolutely fully understand that. And, you know, I do think there's real value in the board considering application of those design guidelines. I think they were well prepared. I think their scale is very comfortable. They were, correct me, Brian and and Rick, they were sort of the outcome of a number of design charrettes with the public. You have five, six years ago, and it really helped to foster a scale and a character with detail kinds of, of, you know, thoughts put together in a way that I think are pretty followable if the board wanted to formalize that somehow, some way.
How's it going? Good.
Was, was that done with the MAPC with with that plan, Pat, Patrick?
Actually, the HDC did that on their own.
Okay. Yeah, but part of it was, you know, some of the, some of those sessions from MAPC and some from other things that we had done in the past, it all, it was all taken with, you know, the feedback that was given a lot of those charrettes over the years. No, it just revolves around, you know, you saw them, you know, scale and materials and overall kind of look and feel that people seem to like here.
Yes, and I think the last time we had discussed, where I had suggested we could incorporate this into the plan. Because there is a specific component about promotional and business development. So that might be appropriate for them to develop some sketches and then have public sessions on possible uses.
Yeah, I think, I think that makes sense. And I think that it might be a better avenue to go down to incorporate it as part of that master plan versus, you know, some separate offshoot that people might see it as from us.
Right, I think it's just helpful because the whole discussion, I hope with the master plan is going to be about what do we want the town to look like? Is the town sustainable? How are we going to sustain education and town services? How are we going to maintain open space? There are a lot of moving pieces here, this should be one of them.
Right. Okay, so I mean, where are we with the whole master plan and starting that?
The town manager is, has asked staff to help him prepare a scope. We have a draft scope that we're passing around with each other right now, refining it. I know the town manager also wants to set up a steering committee to help in providing, yeah, immediate import and impact on approaches and all that kind of good stuff. The person that had done the most of the preparation of the RFP started last summer. So he wasn't familiar with the fact that we've already finished the residential portion about a year ago. So I made sure that that's part of the understanding in the new text that that body of work has been completed and is available.
Yep. The other thing is, there are typically, I think, six components to a master plan, or at least there were last time. One of which was commercial, the other is infrastructure and transportation. And another is the open space, and I think we just finished our open space update plan. So
Right.
There seems to be a lot of information that's already current that we probably don't need to recreate, although we can incorporate it into an overall discussion.
Yeah, absolutely agree.
Okay, so what, what's your thinking of schedule for that going forward? Like your kind of ideal plan?
I think that, you know, we should have consultants selected by May or June and then begin doing public meetings. After that, I'm, you know, still not clear on whether or not we're going to be able to host meetings in person or continue to do them on Zoom. I think there are benefits to both. I personally like a real meeting better. But, you know, I know there are a lot of apprehensions about, you know, what we're dealing with health wise. So I'm expecting, you know, we'll probably be doing Zoom for the majority of this year, I'm going to guess.
Yeah, the, if it, you're thinking the RFP is going to go out, what, in March?
Yeah, I'd say March.
Yeah, so you'll have an award by probably May?
Right.
Yeah, I, from my perspective, it would be good if they could start up, probably, they can do a lot of the data collection during the summer, but the public participation could start in September when people are sort of back and focused. By that time, hopefully, we will have all been vaccinated and we can get together in in public meetings again.
That sounds like a plan to me, a good, a good plan.
Yeah, I think that's more realistic timeframe.
Fair enough.
Good. Anything else on that? I think we, we're not obviously in a, in a rush, so.
Yeah.
I think we're good there. Moving on.
Could I just make one comment about the contours of the, of the proposed expansion of the, the business district? Does Carriage House Lane have to be part of the business district? I mean, on this map that I have, it's, it's actually, it's outlined in green, this one. It includes Carriage Lane, so I just throw out as a question whether that can be carved out of the district and whether those residents there, what their preference would be. And I don't have the answer to that, but I'm just throwing it out.
I think that's a perfectly legitimate approach to take, which would have the zoning line following, you know, the edge of Bay Road, you know, and then it would go eastward once you get to the Public Safety Building property and follow, you know, that boundary line up to the Winthrop School and then bring that back over to Bay Road. So, you know, I think that's a perfectly legitimate approach to take that would, you know, probably help to ease a lot of people's concerns who live on Carriage Lane.
Yeah, or it's, I mean, again, and people can weigh in on, on it from there, but you, you have the the front properties on Bay Road be part of it, and then the rest of it not is also an option, but.
Right, I think it will depend on whether those residents feel that, that the expansion of the business district will, or their inclusion in the business district will increase their property values or decrease their property values. I'm sure that will be the, the definitive issue for them.
Right, exactly.
But I do think the more property you can get into the business district opens up more opportunities for small offices, things like that.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Yeah, well, you know, Willow's already in the business, isn't it? Or is it, yeah?
Oh, yeah, 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 my, my whole street of, you know, six or eight houses is in it.
Right.
And eventually those houses that are on Bay Road will become some sort of commercial, I mean, just as the downtown expands over time, they're perfectly suited to be commercial.
Yeah, potentially, you're right. You already see it on that side. I mean, the ones that are allowed to be commercial or, you know, have Realty Office or locksmiths or, you know, a couple others over there, but.
Do you know if there are apartments above some of those businesses?
Locksmiths has one or two above theirs right next to Cummings. I don't know about the other one. I don't think so, but the Realty Office, I don't, I don't think they have a unit up there, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, I do know that Locksmith does, but I, I do not know about the Realtors Office having anything other than a realty above them.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on, minutes from December 15th last year. Any comments?
Did we discuss those last time and Marnie had suggested changes, or was that a previous set of minutes?
We worked on December the first a couple of times.
Okay, so this is a new, so wait, wait until Marnie has comments because she's the daykeeper on this.
Oh heavens, I think I've, I failed in my, my duties. I only have January 5th. I thought I had made some edits to the prior minutes.
I do know that Anne and you had done a fair amount of editing.
Well, the last one wasn't too bad, and I, I told her to then forward them to you so they could be distributed. Yeah, I don't know if she did that. Because I was fine with them, but the changes were really not that significant.
Well, those are the ones that we're now discussing.
Yeah.
They were distributed.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so I don't have them in front of me, but she did, she made the changes, so.
So you, so you, so you're blessed them?
I, I, well. That might be too strong. I, I, I don't have any kind of religious, whatever, but they're fine.
Holy water? Well, if Marnie's okay with them, then I'm okay with them.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the December 15th meeting minutes.
Second?
I second the motion.
So wait, so Rick made the motion, Bill, Bill seconded it, or just before Marnie. We have two seconds, we have two seconds. Okay, so all those in favor, roll call vote, Rick?
I, Rick Mitchell, I.
Corey.
We're boy, I.
Bill.
Bill, we nine.
Dan.
Dan, I.
Marnie.
Marnie, Krevtai.
And Brian Stein, and I, unanimous. Anything else, Patrick?
You have another set from January.
Sorry about that. Have you had a chance to look at those, Marnie?
I have, I, I have, I have, again, some edits, they're not, you know, they're not that many. I don't know whether you would like me to go over them or just, you trust me, I can get in touch with Anne and go through them.
Yeah, have her make the changes and we'll send them back out and do it next time.
Yeah, it was really just, there was one sentence that I don't think was quite accurate, but the others were, you know, really just to conform with what we were talking about. And it, it's hard to follow when we're in the weeds on some of the sections of the bylaws. So I just had a few edits with respect to that, and the rest is fine.
Right, okay, so since we're talking about minutes, I know Patrick, you had mentioned to me, and I think to Rick a little while back about the state wanting, I guess, some more brevity with our minutes or in general.
Yeah, there's been a push with the Secretary of State to have our minutes to be condensed to topical mentions, you know, rather than getting into ultra minutia. The most important elements to include are the substance discussion topics and then the actual votes, the actual votes are the legal parts of the minutes that need to be, you know, addressed. But, you know, there's been an ongoing desire by Town Council, our last Town Council, Donna Brewer, as well as our current Town Council at Copelman and Page, to have our minutes of all of our boards, you know, to be more topic driven and vote driven. So I, you know, I'd like to be able to get some language, you know, from the Secretary of State that's a little bit, you know, firmer than my elocution of that topic, but that's basically the gist.
So was it?
Patrick, was the secretary commenting on Hamilton's minute taking, or about planning board minute taking?
Yeah, it's, it's basically about all boards, planning boards, zoning boards, Board of Selectmen, Conservation Commission.
But not just our town, it was just.
Yeah, you use the word, use our, very, very personally, I can see that, you know.
You're not in trouble, Bill.
Okay.
You're good to go.
Question, Patrick, where are we with the parking study?
I am in the process of having every single property determined as to what uses are in each building. So I'm having to do that on site and do that as part of a, a big spreadsheet. And between that and everything else, it's taking longer than I had hoped. But I do expect to have it done within the next couple of weeks. I do also anticipate probably early or mid February to have our next meeting with the consultant team.
As long as we're talking about that burnished stuff, any updates on Gordon Conwell or the senior housing project on Essex Street?
Sure, well, you can go ahead, Patrick, if you want to go on that.
Sure, regarding the. Sure. Regarding the one thirty-three Essex project, um, as I understand it, an application will be coming to us next month. Um, I don't have a firm date. I do know they've been doing a fair amount of study on the site. I do know that uh, they're looking into water, water use, water sources. Uh, they've been doing environmental evaluation. I think Larry Smith had also mentioned to the board when he was talking with us back in October, that they were doing drilling relative to depth of bedrock, all of that kind of good stuff. Um, I've made him aware that, you know, every conceivable sort of of and useful sort of evaluation on that property is probably going to be asked for. Uh, traffic, utilities, environmental, um, you know, all that kind of thing is going to be important to evaluate. Um, you know, and bring those things to the board. I've also made them aware that uh, they're going to need to provide the town with funding to allow us to hire our consultants in respective fields. Uh, so those consultants, whether they're traffic engineers, civil engineers, et cetera, uh, can advise the board and the town on the professional things that come from the applicant. So, uh, their understanding of all of that, as you recall, we did do that at Canterbury as well.
Patrick, what's what's the situation on water? I thought the town was really, really out of water and fifty units is a lot of water.
You know, we had a about a year and a half ago, we had a really useful seminar on water in town. And, uh, the town's water consultant who's been on contract for quite some time, uh, he and his team and the DPW director have advised us, we've got plenty of water. Uh, we do have an ailing system uh, that needs a lot of repair over time. But, you know, the outcome of that meeting uh, was that we have plenty of water.
Okay.
Could I just could I just ask? I mean, if we have plenty of water, why do we have water bans every summer?
Well, because we have a sprinkler problem.
Well, of course, but still, I mean, there's at some point, you know, when the Ipswich River runs backwards, I mean, that's a problem. I mean, the Ipswich River aquifer, I don't think is in great shape. Correct me if I'm wrong.
There there is, you know, that's certainly a consideration. Uh, but one of the important things that we will have the consultant do is prepare a water study based on what's available and what their project would be using.
Is there any? Do they have they? Is there any way they would drill their own well and have sort of their own water supply?
Uh, that's in, you know, that's certainly a possibility, but, you know, without us getting into it and without, you know, the the back and forth of the consultants, you know, that's premature to get into.
It's certainly. I thought that town was also really short on pumping capacity, all sorts of. I mean, I understand there may be enough water in the ground, and that's a separate question from, you know, can the town handle another fifty units in its water system without spending a great deal of money?
Yeah. And, you know, and there's another part of this that we often don't consider is that, you know, as part of special permits, projects have to create their own sources. They have have the ability to use town infrastructure, but they can't overwhelm it. And if, you know, there are systems that need upgrading, repair, et cetera, they're going to have to contribute to that. That's what mitigation is about. Uh, and that's what, you know, we need to be able to avail ourselves with when there are instances where projects are taking more than they're providing us. So that's an important element that we need to keep, you know, cognizant of as we review. Uh, but, you know, and if if there are folks that are are watching, uh, you know, this meeting either now or later, um, we have not received an application from the developer yet. When that happens, uh, we'll do all of the appropriate notification. That'll be uh, having people notified within three hundred feet of the boundaries of the property. Uh, we'll have public hearings related to it. Uh, we'll make sure that people know about it. Uh, and it's fully posted and all that good stuff. So, uh, I have been receiving a fair amount of emails and correspondences from folks. Uh, I suspect that some of the board members have as well. Um, you know, I'm trying to, you know, make people aware that until this planning board has something concrete before as a a real application, we're just giving it to.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I've I I receive seems like an email at least every day. I've gotten five over the last couple of days about it. And yeah, I say the same thing that, you know, we have no application before us yet. And once we do, it will go through the proper process and consultants can be hired and so forth. So. And yeah, I mean, in terms of the water in general, I think on once this thing comes up and we do have a an application, part of that will be to talk to DPW and assess, you know, where we are and what this will do and what our treatment facility looks like. And because that was one of the bigger issues last year, right? Was the filtering and the treatment facility and handling everything. Um, I do know that we're still well under where the state says we can be on our water draw per per day.
Right.
Um, because they're the ones that limit it. So, you know, but again, that our limit and what, you know, our aquifer in the river can handle are are kind of two different things, kind of two different things, but.
And and maybe it will engender a discussion about better enforcement of the water ban. Um, because I I look around my neighborhood and there are at least three or four neighbors who are sprinkling their lawn throughout the summer. Everybody else is is dead, you know, and there is a lush green. And it's like, um, that's just.
Down tail, the scarlet green letter.
Yeah. The water ban thing is is interesting because no matter what kind of spring we've had, I mean, we could have, you know, I'm sure there was a water ban the year of the Mother's Storm, you know, the Mother's Year Storm, Mother's Day Storm, right? Where we had we've had tons of rain flooding everywhere. They probably still had a water ban. So it's not that they have, well, they can do it every year, whether there was water issues or not. So they do it. That's what I've kind of been told over the years is that.
Well, there are actually several levels of water ban.
Yes, correct.
There's there's, um, but there's no enforcement of whatever that ban is. It's just, you know, it's assumed that it's going to be voluntary and people take advantage of that.
Right, but it's also the other way where they wouldn't have to put the ban in certain years, right? Where there's not an issue with water. So they they just do it because they they've done it almost every year and they.
Well, that's part of the problem. This may be a little like calling wolf, right?
Right, that's right.
So nobody takes it seriously, yeah.
So to answer Bill's question on the Gordon Theological Seminary, there was a meeting last, um, I think it was Wednesday. There's a meeting with the president and, uh, I think the financial um, Vice President and a couple of other people, Gordon, along with Dave Thompson, myself, Patrick, um, uh, Dave Wanger. Patrick, who else was anybody else on that?
I think you've hit everybody.
David Smith? David Smith?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, David Smith. And basically, um, it it seems like, and Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, on the housing component piece, um, they said it would be that they were in negotiation with somebody. But it, um, it appears that it was not the original group of two. When we last talked to them in August, they said they were working with two different developers and that they were going to select down one. Then I pressed them on that issue and they said, well, it's not the same people we were talking to originally.
Right.
And I pressed them and I said, well, you know, and Marnie, you will appreciate this. I said, and everybody else on the planning board, we went through uh, site plan review, put out a proposal, and we've got a contract and we're probably going to close hopefully next week on, you know, the affordable units uh, at Willow Street. And these guys have been at it for, well, now probably nine months and they still haven't gotten a, um, they haven't gotten anywhere with it. So he said it would be at least six months, maybe a year before they had a substantive project. Now, Patrick, that was what I heard. Tell me if you heard something else.
You you what I heard was that they expected to have their selected group before the town uh, in about six months and go through the permitting process thereafter. Um, you know, thinking that it would probably be six months after that in order to work through the permitting process. And and that might be accurate. I don't know. In that, you know, you're taking a lot of built product and trying to reconfigure, rework, uh, all of that. That's pretty tedious uh, design work to to work through to get to, uh, permit drawings. I might, I might think. Uh, but, uh, you know, if we can get something from them in six months, I think that'd be pretty good. Uh, I will tell people that what I also heard, and correct me, Rick, if you recall something different, is that they intended all of the units or this, all of these units to be part of a forty B. And the forty B would have all of the units in its market, uh, except for those that uh, based on the state regs need to be affordable. So that'd be twenty percent, I guess, out of that two hundred and ten number of units. And thereby the full two ten would be considered affordable for the town.
Yeah, I mean, that's what that's why. And I pressed them on that issue that twenty-five percent would be affordable and then all two ten would count. And then they were going to provide rent subsidies to their students to, uh, for those that needed housing that could then rent them from this new entity that takes control, um, just like they were normal renters.
You know, another thing that I I, you know, have recalled since our discussion is that I want to make sure to the extent that we can that these units are perpetual rather than evaporating in thirty years or whatever. Uh, I think that's important for the town. So long as the college is there uh, and those units are there, I think that it, you know, we owe it to ourselves uh, to try to make sure that they do remain as affordable.
So could I just ask, have they actually selected someone? Are they negotiating a purchase and sale agreement? Are lawyers involved? Are consultants involved? Or are they still just talking to different developers or potential buyers?
Well, they have worked through, uh, you know, a selection process. There were two firms uh, that made the cut. Their preferred, their originally preferred group, uh, they were working with, and I guess they got to loggerheads or something. And then they, uh, you know, that group fell out and then the second entity and Gordon Conwell are now working together on how to get a proposal more refined so they can get that worked out. That's going, you know, that's, uh, you know, the point at which, you know, they'll start putting their application together. But, uh, as I understand it, um, you know, the prior consultant team wanted to do different things. Um, you know, and this team has come to the conclusion, or at least at this point in the stage of working with Gordon Conwell, that, uh, they're at the point of being able to configure the deal based on this market approach with the twenty-five percent being affordable.
So in terms of permitting, I mean, you said it would be a forty B. It's obviously a bit of a simplified process because the buildings and units are essentially there, right? I mean, they might, they may be reconfigured in some way internally, but it's, um, it still goes through, obviously, the zoning board and other boards can comment, but it's it's obviously a.
Expedited process.
Expedited, yeah, it's more of a use.
Right.
Change than anything, well, kind of a use change. Okay.
Okay.
I still know there's anything else to it.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, uh, we have been sending out, uh, I think I did first, and I know, uh, the Madam Clerk has sent out, I believe it was yesterday, the, uh, conflict of interest, tax, uh, and all of the certification requirements uh, that we need members. If you've not done it in a couple of years, um, these are two-year tenured certifications. So if you've not done it, please do so. Uh, in this email would have came from Karen Corinne Kale. Uh, and again, it's regarding the, uh, conflict of interest certifications that we need as board members, town staff, et cetera, to provide the local clerk. So we're all legit.
Great. All right. Yeah, I have to check if I did it last year. If it's been two years, I can't remember.
The test is online, pretty easy to work through.
Yep. Okay. Great, I think we're good.
Excellent.
Excellent. Somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Bill, second. Rick seconds. Okay, all those in favor, Marnie?
Marnie Crouch, I.
Bill?
Bill, we nine.
Corey?
We're boy, you, I.
Rick?
Rick Mitchell, I.
Dan?
Dan, I.
And Brian Stein, and I. All right, thank you, everybody.
Bye.
All right, thanks for listening, Pat.
We broke the eight P M barrier.
What's that?
We broke the eight P M barrier.
That's right. Got to do it once in a while.
Good job.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Patrick. Thanks, Marnie.
Bye.